I'm ready, okay. In that case, I will call to order the Wednesday, November 7th, 2018 meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission, and we will start off with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Hawkins.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Can we have roll call, please?
Britton Griffith. Peter Gower.
Here.
Ed Hawkins.
Here.
John Marshall is absent. Paul Olivas is also absent. Kevin Weiskie.
Here.
Mark Johnson.
Here.
Do we have a quorum?
Great, thank you. Next item on our agenda is item three, public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. I do have one request to speak for on this, from Danny Kleas.
Danny Kleas, for the record. Not too sure about your staff. We have an apartment complex out there in the North Valleys, Lemon Valley, to be exact, on the corner of Lemon Drive and Military Road. Now they, in the tentative map, there was no driveway where they have it at right now. They put in a driveway right at the end of an acceleration lane on Lemon Drive. I don't know how safe that is, really, because there's semis, people trying to get on Lemon Drive, plus the people on Lemon Drive, and everybody knows, they don't go to speed limit. Your staff, after everything leaves here, goes to the final mapping after the tentative. Somebody ought to know this kind of stuff. Stuff like that shouldn't even be happening. So how can you guys rely on your staff if they're going to be pulling that kind of stupid stuff? Here's another thing. Lemon Drive just got opened up all the way through. Hesco barriers go two feet into the southbound lanes, so it makes you have a really nice skinny lane. I almost clashed mirrors in my truck with somebody else going north. The southbound lane is big enough for a Subaru, and that's about it. Staff again. Losing a lot of faith in the city of Reno and the decisions that they're making, because it's pretty poor, along with that big old ditch that runs down the middle of Lemon Drive. I drove that ditch just the other day. It was supposed to go into a retention basin. Guess what? It doesn't. It goes right to that lake. So hopefully this year is another dry year, so we don't get a big sluice of water going right into that lake and right into my house. Hopefully, when Prado Ranch comes around, you guys say no. You guys are supposed to be discouraged from building in floodplains. The last workshop was a mess. They want to take the lake and make it smaller and build in floodplains. That shouldn't happen at all. That's all I got to say. And Tammy says she misses you all.
Thanks, Danny, and tell Tammy we said thanks. Are there any other requests to speak forms on this agenda item? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back for item four, approval of the minutes from Reno City Planning Commission Meeting, October 3rd. Looking for a motion.
Commissioner Weiskie, so moved.
Mr. Hawkins, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
Mr. Gower, I have to abstain, I wasn't there.
Mr. Johnson, I also have to abstain. Okay. Item number five, City Council liaison reports.
I have nothing from council members tonight.
Okay. So then we will move on to our public hearings, and we will start with item 6.1, case number LDC 19-00006, The Human Bean. Start with a presentation from the applicant.
Good evening. For the record, Michelle Rambo with Rubicon Design Group. Recommending, no, representing the applicant in this. So we are here today for a human bean coffee drive-through business to be located on a little portion, a little over a quarter of an acre, in the existing shopping center at southeast corner of Kitski and Moana. And in my map here, I kind of tried to orient, so you know exactly where it is. We have the Ashley Furniture in this corner, and the Jones West Ford is south of the center. And then, for those of us who have been around forever, the old Mervyn's Building is right here. So we're here tonight because we are required to get a special use permit for the drive-through use and for the building orientation, since this is in a mixed-use zone. It's also in the convention regional center overlay, and our master plan is suburban mixed-use. So we created kind of just another look at the shopping center as a whole with a perspective. We overlaid the site plan onto the area, just to give you a kind of an idea of how it's all going to work together. There's a building on the east side and an existing drive aisle on the south side of the project with a bunch of parking to the south as well. So the site plan itself, there was previously an existing, or there was at one point, a small coffee kiosk in that same location within the shopping center. It has since been removed. We are proposing the building, which is located kind of at a diagonal fashion here, with the drive-through starting over, you know, going through this way and exiting out here. Pedestrian access is being provided by a separate walkway across the existing landscaped area with an ADA accessible crosswalk to a outdoor area with a walk-up window for ordering. And then, over on the east side of the building, we have several seating areas. These are tables with umbrellas, and then this is a trellis with seating underneath it as well. And along with those, we are offering also six parking spaces for people who want to get out and walk up to the window and maybe sit in a table and enjoy their coffee. Landscape plan, the existing landscaping on the site is in orange, or brown, whatever it looks on the screen, and the new is in yellow, just so you get an idea of what's there and what we're putting in. We are screening the drive-through between a combination of the trees and a hedge of shrubs that will go pretty much all the way around the drive-through itself for screening. We are adding some additional trees on the west side of the project. These, there are two shown on this plan, one in this location and then one up on the other side of the walkway. Staff has added a condition to require that we put in a third tree, so that will be included on this portion of the site over here to add just a little more screening. And then we've also provided some landscaping around the pedestrian areas at the entrance and exit of the drive-throughs and up in this corner of this area up as well. So elevations of the building, they are, the overall height is 21 feet, roughly. There will be awnings on three sides of the building, so one over the drive-through window, one over the walk-up window, and then one over where the bicycle racks will be located. And then, in addition, just some general thoughts. This is in a location that is underutilized currently. The shopping center has a lot of vacant space, so the hope is that this will bring additional people into that shopping center, maybe get it, you know, start a little revitalization. It is technically infill site, so it complies with your master plan, your general, master plan for infill development. And also, it'll help kind of break up the expanse of asphalt, make it a little nicer as you're driving down the road. So that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. We'll let you know if we have questions after we hear from staff.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. For the record, Sienna Reed. I'll be brief tonight. Michelle gave you a good overview of the project. Did just want to highlight that we did work through one redesign of the site. Initially, the site had two drive-up windows. That has been reduced to one, really allowed for a better orientation in terms of the pedestrian amenities and how they connect to Kitski Lane, so really furthering our mixed-use standards in this particular location. In addition, there is a lot of landscaping already on the site. There is more being proposed, so we will definitely be reducing impervious surface with this request and also bringing the larger existing shopping center site into closer conformance with code in terms of landscaping. And as Michelle mentioned, this is infill of an existing site, really bringing a new use to a center that is currently underutilized, so that's definitely something that is supported in our master plan and our code. So staff is recommending approval of the particular request before you tonight as conditioned. It was reviewed, sorry, almost moved over, the Ward Two comments. It was reviewed by Ward Two in terms of the NAB in September, and their comments have really been addressed through the site design. And then, I've also received one call on the project, really just information-oriented, so no concerns were expressed there. And with that, I'll conclude. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Sienna. This is a public hearing, but before I open it up for public comment, I'll bring it back to the commission for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Marshall.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Griffith, no disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson, I visited the site.
Mr. Gower, visited the site.
Mr. Hawkins, visited the site.
Commissioner Weiskie, as did I.
Hey, thank you. Michelle, do we have any requests to speak forms on this item?
No, we do not.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to the commission for questions. Commissioner Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Rambo, just a couple of quick questions. Old trees, when I walked around over there, there's quite a few old trees. We're leaving everything, right?
Yes, all the existing trees are staying where they are.
Okay, and we don't have a problem with stacking over there? Or that's going to be taken care of and addressed?
For the vehicle stacking?
Yes.
Yes, we, the drive-through does provide the required length for vehicle stacking as per the code.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Weiskie.
If there's no further questions, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion in the case of LDC 19-00006, The Human Bean. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subjecting to the conditions, and I can make all of the findings.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Weiskie. I have a motion, I have a second.
Commissioner Griffith, a second. I can make all the findings.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project. Okay, we'll move on to item 6.2, case number LDC 19-00011, Real World K-9. We will have a presentation from the applicant.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Angela Foose with Loomis Engineering here today on behalf of the applicant. The request before you tonight is a special use permit for three things. The first one is to allow a 7,100 square foot outdoor commercial recreation area that will be used for canine training. The second trigger is to allow for a 24-hour operation, and that is for the indoor animal boarding component of this project. And then finally, the third is a non-residential development located adjacent to residentially-zoned property. And we also triggered a site plan review, which is normally an administrative process, but we tied that in as part of the special use permit, so you're reviewing a special use permit. One of the components of that is probably, or is also because the site is located within 300 feet of a school. The .6 acre site is located north of McCarran Boulevard and east of Sutro. This is an existing industrial building. The building itself has been there since the late 1970s. It was about a year ago that the Maverick Gas Station that's to the west of this property came before you. On that site map in front of you, the Maverick Gas Station was not yet built, so we actually couldn't find any ortho photos that showed the Maverick Gas Station because it's that new. But that Maverick Gas Station is in place. The parcel both to the north and the east is the Sikh temple. That's just one parcel itself. And then on the south side is Hug High School. From a zoning perspective, again, one of the triggers for this special use permit is because we're adjacent to residentially-zoned property. And while there's no actual residential use around this property, we do have that MF21 zoning on that Sikh temple parcel to the north and the east. A little bit about this property itself. Again, it's an existing building. The operation is for a dog facility that does overnight boarding. It does dog training, and it also does doggy daycare. Those hours of operation are limited to within the 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM timeframe, and that also includes drop-off and pickup. Because we have overnight boarding, we do trigger that 24-hour use, although drop-off and pickup is limited to the 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM timeframe. We are adding an outdoor component, and that's going to be on the south side of the building, and that will be to add a play area for the dogs. Here's the site plan. The north arrow is pointing to the right, so you kind of have to orient yourself. McCarran Boulevard is there on the left. And when the Maverick Gas Station went in, one of the requirements was to provide an access off of McCarran. Through that process, this parcel no longer had a separate access or a separate driveway from McCarran. So there is a deceleration lane on McCarran that provides basically a one-way access to get to the Maverick Gas Station. We do have a reciprocal access easement that gives this property access from McCarran. So you can kind of see there the arrows, if you follow my pointer here, coming here from the decel lane. You would turn into that Maverick Gas Station, at which point you're on the Maverick parcel, and then you'll come into the property here. The way the site is designed now is none of these parking stalls are there now, so as part of this development, those parking stalls will be put in place. And one thing that we're actually improving is the access in. So right now, to access in, it's directly right here. So we're adding two parking spaces to give us a little bit more room, so when cars come in, if there's any cars coming behind them, that just gives them a little bit more time to actually be able to turn right in here without any conflicts. There are existing signs posted in this area here that says this is a one-way access. Through discussions with engineering staff, they'd asked that we also post a sign on our entrance and exit way right here, our driveway, basically, that says one-way, so that we can keep cars from turning left onto that one-way access. This is the existing building here, and then we'll be adding an outdoor play area here, on a small outdoor area here that will be used for one-on-one training. Now, because we are adjacent to that residentially-zoned property on the north side here and the east side here, we have a couple of things that we do have to modify as part of the site plan. This component here, there's an existing chain-link fence. We'll be adding a six-foot-tall wood fence, and that complies with the screening requirements. And then also, on this east side, we'll be adding a six-foot-tall wood fence. On the south side, while there's no residential adjacency, we do have McCarran Boulevard. Working with staff, we're going to be adding a mesh screen to go over the chain-link fence, so that the dogs won't have access to look onto McCarran Boulevard. And also, because we have Hug High School across the street, if there's any activity, it will kind of help to buffer those two uses. So other than that, it's a pretty basic operation. You guys have seen these types of facilities before. I think one of the things that always gets brought up is how do we make sure that the noise levels are dealt with? So one thing with this operation is they do some heavy, intensive training. Again, that's an operational thing, and city zoning has no control over how a facility operates. But beyond that, through the zoning code, you do have noise restrictions. Because we're adjacent to residentially-zoned property, at the property line, we can't exceed 65 decibels of noise. So that's one way that the city has the ability to enforce that noise is always maintained at the levels. The second is through Washoe County. There is permitting that's done through the county for these types of facilities, and they have a separate enforcement policy, so that if there's any complaints rendered against the property, against dogs barking, there's a process in place to handle that. So there's basically, through the operation, they're able to control the noise of the dogs, and then through the city zoning and also through the Washoe County process. So there's kind of three layers, layers of protection to make sure that none of the neighbors are negatively impacted by the project. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Angela. Call you back after we hear from Kyle.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner, for the record. Angela did a really thorough job on outlining what the request is. We have a request for an outdoor commercial recreation facility and 24-hour operations, and then the residential adjacency component. As Angela stated, the subject site that, and I'm sorry, I don't see parcel lines, aren't coming up very well on this, but the residential adjacency is on this parcel where the Sikh temple is. The nearest developed residential is about 190 feet to the east at the condominiums there. So there's, although there's no current developed residential property, there is that potential in the future. So the, with the mitigation measures that the applicant has provided with the solid screening, the fact that the majority of the outdoor play area is oriented towards McCarran Boulevard, where there's a substantial amount of noise existing already, and then, and then the fact that the, as conditioned, the hours of operation for the outdoor area will be limited between 7:00 and 6:00 PM, staff felt comfortable with the request and could make all the findings. This project did go to the Ward Four Neighborhood Advisory Board, and no writ, although no written comments were received, there were some general concerns regarding just increased traffic onto Sutro, because as Angela outlined, the project has a shared access off of McCarran and also an ingress/egress onto Sutro. Some folks were concerned about increased traffic onto Sutro. That being said, staff could make all the findings for the request and recommends the Planning Commission approve the project. I'm available for any questions, you have.
Thank you, Kyle. Before we open it up for public comment, I'll ask the Commissioners for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Weiskie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I visited the site and received an email from the applicant's representative.
Mr. Hawkins took a tour of the site and spoke with the applicant.
Mr. Gower, visited the site and spoke with applicant's representative.
Mr. Johnson, as did I.
Commissioner Griffith, a missed a call with the applicant's representative.
Mr. Marshall, unfamiliar with the site and received an email.
Okay, thank you. I will open this up for public comment. Do we have any requests to speak for on this, Michelle?
No, we do not.
Okay, is there anyone wishing to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to the commission for questions. Mr. Gower.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, when I visited the site this afternoon, it was interesting to see the site with the Maverick there. I hadn't been in that part of town with the Maverick there, and it's, it's an interesting egress, ingress/egress kind of situation going on there. So I was just wanting to ask staff that, when engineering reviewed it and looked at particularly, if we could put the site plan back up, for two, two movements of traffic. One, because when I, when I came, I came Sutro. I didn't come in that entrance off of McCarran, and then came down through the gas station lot and saw the, you know, the one-way coming up, and it was almost a little bit alarming seeing the one-way up and thinking, okay, I have to get into the building here. So there's that movement, and then there's the movement that Angela talked about, coming out of the, the parking lot, not only not wanting to make that left turn, advising against that, but then to continue straight out of that parking lot and avoid, you know, a vehicle coming up the one-way as the vehicle's exiting this parking lot. And my main concern is for the safety of the people who are trying to get to this business in their, their car, avoiding conflicts in that little space right there with that one-way comes up. And I just want confirmation from you and from the engineering staff that looked at it, that all of the design, you know, traffic engineering applications are being provided here to provide that safety in this situation.
Yeah, Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner, for the record. So it's a, it's a great question. The, kind of just a little back history on it. The, when the Maverick site was completed and permitted through the city, that's when NDOT came through and essentially allowed for this, this new ingress/egress situation. The, the previous access was in the middle of the site over here, which, with access to the new, to the new Maverick site, created a conflict. They also put a deceleration lane during that process along McCarran Boulevard, which made for a much safer situation as far as McCarran, McCarran goes. Engineering, when, when that application originally came in, engineering had concerns with what the original, or the existing driveway situation, where it was located. Being that the building is where it is and the site is developed, it, it kind of made it a little difficult, and, and with the permitted reciprocal access off of McCarran, it made it a little constrained as far as where to, a better situation of where to put that driveway. The applicant proposed adding two parking stalls here and shifting this driveway to the north, which our engineering staff felt comfortable with, that that was an improvement of what the existing situation was. So, so yes, we, we did look at that very heavily, and a lot of conversation was had with that, but it, it was an existing and permitted situation through the city, when the Maverick site was built and when NDOT permitted this, these improvements.
Okay. Appreciate the level of confidence from, from you and from engineering that it was looked at and, and you're comfortable with the design. So I don't have any other questions, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you, Commissioner. Additional questions?
I have one, actually. I'll follow up on that, Kyle. Just, I've seen this before, but typically not to the degree with respect to the, maybe the reduction in parking requirements from what the city has, which if I'm reading it, would be 42, although I'm not sure that the commercial, the outdoor commercial amusement, I would necessarily agree with requiring parking on this, but the reduction's down to 16, which is pretty substantial. I guess my, my question, and maybe this is both for you and perhaps Angela, with respect to the, the applicant, with respect to, you know, there's no other staff parking here and drop-off in the morning. I, I guess I'm wondering if we're potentially creating, you know, an additional issue with the entrance if people are coming in and not finding any available parking within there just during maybe drop-off and pickup hours, especially if we've got multiple staff that may be using the same parking lot.
Yeah, so Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner, for the record. So... So, a lot of the, a lot of the reason that staff felt comfortable with this reduction is because we're dealing with canines rather than humans that are occupying the site during those business hours. And now, we understand that there's, you know, going to be a staff and, and customers are going to be coming and going, but their, their pickup and drop-off time seem to jive with what their parking reduction request was. And the, the parking study that they provided seemed, made sense in this case because we, because our City of Reno code for this type of facility is all jumbled into several different uses. It's, it's for animal clinic, which would be like a vet, a veterinary clinic, a shelter hospital, or boarding kennel. So, separating the animal, the animal boarding facility out based on its own rate seat was logical and made sense to staff. So, staff could support that.
Okay, so I guess then, if I can ask the applicant, just operationally, thinking about this at either drop-off in the morning or pickup, what is the staffing level anticipated and what is the, I guess, anticipated number of, of canines that would be there on a, you know, dropped off and picked up as opposed to those that would be being boarded at the time?
So, from a staffing point of view, they have two different shifts. One is kind of a seven A.M. to about three in the afternoon morning shift, and then there's another shift that would be about ten in the morning till about seven at night. So, those are the two breakup, breaks up, breakups in the shifts for the employees. And they have trainers there, they have the operators, the managers there. So, from kind of a maximum case scenario, they have about seven people employee-wise that would be there at one point, at one point in time. The maximum in terms of boarding, they're looking at about fifty animals. You don't typically have full boarding unless it's the holidays. So, that's kind of a worst-case scenario. Again, they're all in different shifts. People come anywhere between seven and ten in the morning, and then three and six at night to do drop-off and pickup. Just operationally, the way it works is they hardly ever get more than three people at one time coming and dropping off and picking up. So, it's not a mad rush of people all at one time coming and dropping off because they offer these different services. Again, some are there for specific training, some are there for the overnight boarding, and then some are there just for the doggy daycare. So, that also helps to kind of break up the needs of the customers and when they come. And when we looked at different parking needs, Kyle was right, you know, based on the city code, the parking is very specific to animal shelters or hospitals. There's no, that doesn't match the type of use that we're doing. There is a boarding component, but again, you're missing the, the doggy daycare and you're missing the one-on-one training. So, we couldn't really find a use within the parking code, within the City of Reno's parking code. So, then we started looking at national standards, since we found some uses that are a little bit more aligned with what this is, and they were much reduced. For instance, kind of at a minimum parking, based on the square footage of our building, showed we needed six parking stalls. So, that seemed far too minimum based on what we're doing. So, we kind of found this happy balance between the square footage of our building, the number of intended animals, and, and where that balance is. And so, sixteen parking spaces seemed to work both from an operational perspective and then based on national parking standards for the actual use.
Okay.
Is that a long answer?
That's, that's a long answer, but it's what I was, it's what I was asking for, so I appreciate that.
Okay.
Commissioners, any additional questions or comments or motion? I'm open to any of the above. Commissioner Hawkins.
I entertain a motion here. In the case of LDC one-nine dash zero-zero-zero-one-one, real-world canine, and based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions, and I can meet all the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Gower, I'll second. I can make the findings as well.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project. Moving on to item six-point-three, case number LDC one-seven dash zero-zero-zero-six-eight, United Federal Credit Union Zone Change. We'll start with a presentation from the applicant.
Good evening. Derek Kirkland, Wood Rogers, for the record, representing the applicant. So, as you guys have seen this previously with the master plan amendment, the project is, is located just north of, there's a CVS here, Walmart's is out in, off of Lemon Valley. It's about, site's about three-point-six acres, and currently, currently the master plan was changed. It was approved by a city council in July to basically change this front piece to A.C. and the back piece of the property to open space. So, about two-point-seven-three acres of, of general commercial and point-eight-six acres of open space, and that was confirmed by the Regional Planning Commission in October. So, basically, the existing zoning on the property is L.L.R. two-point-five in the back, kind of where the, the master plan has it is open space now, and L.L.R. one, about an acre, just shy of an acre in the center of the site, and that A.C. carries around in the front of the site. So, what we're requesting is basically with the, the zone changes to bring in a conformance with the master plan. And so, basically, this L.L.R. one that's just shy of an acre would, and the one-point-seven acres in the front would create a total of about two-point-seven-three acres of arterial And so, I, I think there was, there's some questions about, you know, a project coming forward, and as we know, this has been proposed for United Federal Credit Union, and at this time, we just, we just want to make sure that everybody understands there's, there isn't a project with this attached to the zone change, and we do understand some of the concerns. I think as stated through the master plan amendment process, that the applicant is going to reserve about one-point-oh-two acres of open space. You know, largely, this whole corner is commercial, so you, it's not really appropriate to have a large lot, residential designation kind of in the center of the site. So, really, we're bringing it to conformance with the master plan, and once we come back with the special use permit, we, we will address all those concerns with traffic and drainage and hillside and all that stuff will get addressed with the future project. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you, Derek. Heather, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Heather Manzo, Associate Planner for the Record. The applicant did a really good job of outlining kind of the master plan amendment history that's recently taken place on the property and the current request that's before you this evening. Staff was able to make all the findings and is recommending that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
I think that was under a minute. That was impressive. Okay, before I entertain any public comment, I'll bring it back for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Marshall.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Griffith, no disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson, no disclosures.
Commissioner Gower, no disclosures.
Mr. Hawkins drove past the site, talked with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Wieski, as did I.
Okay, I will open public comment on this item. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forms on this item?
No, we do not.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make a public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to the Commission for any questions or comments or motion. Commissioner Wieski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the case of LDC one-seven dash zero-zero-zero-six-eight, United Federal Credit Union Zone Change, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that city council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance, and I can make all of those findings.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a motion. Mr. Griffith.
Commissioner Griffith, I'll second, and I can make all the findings.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Moving on to item six-point-four, case number LDC one-nine dash zero-zero-zero-nine, Park Lane Storage. I think we're going to welcome Derek back to the stage.
Good evening again. Derek Kirkland, for the, for the record, with Wood Rogers, representing the applicant. So, we're here before you tonight to ask for a, for approval of a special use permit to construct about a ninety-one-thousand-square-foot mini warehouse facility on about one-point-five-five acres in the South Virginia Street Transit Overlay Corridor, and also a special use permit for twenty-four-hour operation. So, the project site is located just, just east of the Park Lane, the larger Park Lane Development. So, you have Plum Lane up here on the top, and then North Virginia Street runs along the, the bulk of the Park Lane Development. You have the movie theater, and then the parking lot for the movie theater, and then there's a vacant, the vacant lot here. You do have a commercial building just to the south, a, a commercial building to the north, a couple, single-family lots to the north, and then you have a, a bulk of pretty much the multifamily, existing multifamily development to the east. So, I, I just want to make sure that everybody understands, so the, the project itself, the mini storage is, is really part of this larger Park Lane Development. And so, with all the density that's proposed with the Park Lane Development upwards of, you know, close to seventeen-hundred units, we feel like a lot of this density is up by the Transit Corridor, which is the intent of the South Virginia Transit Corridor Overlay District, and the project site's really tucked kind of in the back of that. And the purpose of the mini store site is with all the density and the smaller units, people have a lot of stuff that they're going to want to store, so we're basically creating, creating that situation. So, the benefit of this project is really to create some storage space that will complement that density that is part of the Park Lane Development. Another benefit is that it, it really encourages people to utilize this storage, and with the walkability of the South Virginia Transit Corridor, we really don't want people driving all the way across town to find storage, so this, it's really a complement to what we're doing with Park Lane. Compatibility-wise, you know, you got multifamily back here. It's pretty common to have storage units where you have a lot of density, and also they're not very high-traffic generators, so it would complement the, the uses, fairly quiet, fairly quiet uses, not a whole lot of people there during the, during the evening period, and so it, it does work well with the surrounding area. Like I mentioned earlier, it is kind of tucked in the back, so it's not right up on South Virginia Street, so it's not really serving the purpose of transit. And then the last part is, is with the storage facility, we're looking to go on three stories, so we're actually getting a one-point-three, three-five-floor area ratio to complement kind of that, the desire for the South Virginia Transit Corridor for commercial uses. The site is zone mixed-use, South Virginia Transit Corridor with the urban mixed-use density, so mini warehouse use is allowed with the special use permit, and because this, the property surrounding us is mixed-use, residential adjacency would not apply in this situation. So, a little bit about the project, one-point-five-five acres, floor area ratio one-point-three-five, so the, the larger building in the center is basically proposed at three stories, it's about eighty-five thousand square feet. This, all, all indoor storage facilities, a range of, of unit types, which will be based on market demand. Building two is a, proposes a one-story building, and this is actually proposed for indoor RV storage, about seven to eight spaces. With the higher density is, is people come in, if they have boats or things like that, it gives them an opportunity to have those things nearby where they live. And so, circulation through the site is basically, we'll have a sales office in the, the larger building, a few spots, five, about five spaces for, for people to utilize, coming in to rent their spaces. Hopefully, you know, a lot of people are going to be walking over from the Park Lane to rent these spaces and not driving their car. And then as you come in, we'll have a gated access, code entry only, and then a one-way circulation pattern, a twenty-foot drive aisle for, for fire access, and then we'll have this, this section here, along the, the back of the building will basically be eight feet wide and allow for people to pull up, and then there'll be doors, a couple of doors on the side and an elevator to move your stuff up to whatever floor you're on. So, you basically park here, unload your stuff, or load your stuff. And then we're also going to have three loading zones in this back against the wall. There'll be ten feet, ten feet wide by forty feet, forty-five feet long, which would, you know, could accommodate multiple cars or could accommodate up to three larger, you know, moving vehicles. And then as you come through, we'll have, we provided a nice wider area there so that people can back in their stuff, maneuver around, and landscaping. So, we're required to provide about thirty, thirty-three-hundred square feet of landscaping, it's about five percent, and we're providing fifteen percent. We're putting the bulk of the landscaping up towards Rondell Way. We're proposing to put larger trees up there, which would count towards our one percent pedestrian amenities, and as the project, if the project were to be approved through final design, we, we understand that we would be adding some other stuff there to get to that one percent. Along the perimeter, we do have, so this is the, the two parcels here, and then there's the existing multifamily along the, the east side of the property. So, wherever there's those existing residential uses, we're proposing a, a solid six-foot, either a CME wall or something similar to that, but basically to match the same wall types that are proposed in the Park Lane Development. And that, that'll, that'll provide kind of that screening from the site to, to those residential areas. And then for lighting, basically proposing low-mounted lighting, it'll be automatic, either on the wall or on the building to, to make sure that we don't get light spill over into those residential areas. And that's why we did extend the wall from the gate, the width of the adjacent residential property there. So, moving on, so as I mentioned, we have the twenty-foot, foot drive aisle, which will create that, that fire access all the way around the building. We'll have an exit, exit gate, same thing, code, code exit. In terms of operations, so we are asking for twenty-four-hour operations, these types of, of facilities, it's, is basically an extension of, of someone's garage or someone's house where they would store stuff, and so if somebody needs to come and get something, they would have that code access and would be able to get in. We are proposing to have an onsite property manager there twelve, about half the day for a twelve-hour shift, and then the remaining twelve hours would basically be a, a video monitoring or surveillance system that's either monitored by the property manager or some people choose to go with like a consulting services, security services, where there's video monitoring cameras throughout, and basically if, if someone's in, code's entered, detects movement, basically would send, you know, notifications, excuse me, notifications that there, there is activity in the building, and so that'll all be monitored. We do have bike parking up front as part of the requirement for the South Virginia Transit Corridor, so we'll, we'll provide those two bicycle parking spaces. The other thing we looked at was the city code for parking goes based off of units, and since the, the unit types will vary and could change, we don't know exactly how many units will be in this. So, we did an analysis with city code, which six to eight-hundred units would gen, interior units would generate a, a demand for a range of about fifteen to twenty parking spaces. I.T.E. manual goes based off of square footage, and so based on I.T.E. manual, it would be about sixteen parking spaces required, and, and we're providing, or, excuse me, thirteen parking spaces. So, we're providing sixteen, which is a, a right in between both the I.T.E. and the city manual. Three of those stalls are, are basically the, the loading zones, and so those could actually accommodate more cars if there wasn't large, large moving vehicles there, which we know is not going to be the case all the time. And as I mentioned, we will have a secured exit and a secured entrance. Utilities on the site, basically Stoddard Drive, right now, dead ends into the, there's a fence right here. People from the, the apartment complexes next to us are actually parking in it. We met with Reno Fire, they had no desire to extend that. There is a cul-de-sac down here, and so they had no desire to have an emergency access gate. And so, basically, the utilities are also in Stoddard Drive, so those will be extended. Some of them extend through our, our property. There's a drainage facility, there's two sewer stubs there, water stubs, so all utilities are right there, and so those will be extended to our site, and we'll maintain that easement through the site for utility access, for the existing utilities. So, looking at the architecture of the site, basically, as I mentioned earlier, is we're, we're looking at doing the, most of the pedestrian, kind of the glazed wind, the glazed windows and fake windows or whatever you want to call them, basically along Rondell Way to kind of give it that, that South Virginia Street Transit Corridor requirement for pedestrian-friendly. We'll have a, a five-foot sidewalk and a landscape strip between there, and then we'll We'll have a five-foot sidewalk and a landscape strip between there, and then we'll have the vertical and horizontal articulation on all sides of the building and kind of dress up that street frontage. And then, in terms of signage, we're actually, it's hard to see in these, but on that front by the entrance, right here, there's a, we're just looking at going with a wall-mounted sign, with a little bit of accent lighting. No monument-style signage will be proposed with this, mainly just the size of the site, there's not a whole lot of room for that. And so, with that, that concludes my presentation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you, Derek. We'll let you know shortly. Kyle, welcome back.
Thank you, Chair Commissioners, Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner, for the record. Derek did a really good job overviewing the project. Essentially, what we have here is two SUP components, one for the mini-warehouse use in the South Virginia Street Transit Corridor Overlay, and the 24-hour operational request. There's a couple things that I just want to provide a little bit of clarification on. Although the total square footage for the site is roughly 91,500 square feet, it's broken up into two buildings, and so condition number six that's discussed in your staff report essentially requires that because building number two, the RV storage building, doesn't meet the current FAR requirements for the zone, it requires that the applicant, if they do decide to phase the project, that they build the larger building first essentially, which meets the FAR requirement. So, that's the background on that condition. Also, there is residential uses directly to the east and north of the site, as Derek discussed, you have some multifamily to the east and a couple of single-family residences directly to the north. Although the solid-wall requirement or the solid-screening requirement is not required because you have, the adjacent properties are also zoned mixed-use, the applicant has proposed a solid wall as a mitigation measure in between to help screen the units from, or the existing units from headlights, spill-over lighting, noise, et cetera. So, the third thing I want to emphasize is that, and the applicant has proposed to do all these storage units in building one interior. And so, as Derek stated, there's going to be an elevator where they'll enter and move their stuff into these units from the interior, which made staff felt comfortable with the 24-hour request based on that proposal and also with the screening requirements. And then, also, the RV building that's on the south end of the site, although those units are exterior, obviously, because the boats and RVs have to get into the building, it's oriented in such a way that the building actually acts as a screening method from the multifamily over to the east. And so, with all those things being considered, staff could make the applicable findings with the proposed conditions or with the recommended conditions. This did not go to, excuse me. I forgot which ward, excuse me. The Ward 1 nab, that particular nab got canceled. And so, but staff didn't, it was posted on the website for comment, and staff didn't receive any comments related to the project, and I didn't receive any emails or phone calls regarding it. So, with all those things being considered, staff could make the applicable findings and recommends the planning commission approve the project, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Kyle. Before I open this up for public comment, once again, I'll bring it back to the Commissioner for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Wiskey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I visited the site and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Hawkins, as did I.
Commissioner Gower, as did I.
Mr. Johnson, I visited the site and had email correspondence with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner, with no disclosures.
Commissioner Marshall, I'm familiar with the site.
Okay, with that, I will open up public comment. Michelle, do we have any requests to speak forms on this item?
No, we do not.
Does anyone in the audience wish to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public. I do? Oh, please, come on up, just state your name, and you'll have three minutes. Sorry, I missed you. Thank you, Claudia.
If you could, fill out a comment card when you're done, thank you.
Is that Michelle?
Yeah.
Perfect. Roderick McKay, I always had a concern about the 24-hour SUV, S U P, excuse me. I know that in the neighborhood, there's been another self-storage facility that was recently opened, and they were controlled to an operation of 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And listening to the presentation, this storage facility is acting as an arm or a leg for the Park Lane Mall, and those businesses are going to be open 24 hours. So, my concern is, why would one applicant receive permission to have that access where another applicant was not? That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. If you can fill out one of those forms over with Michelle.
Please fill out a comment card.
That'd be great. Thank you. Any additional requests to speak? I'll stay looking for a minute this time. Okay. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for Questions. I'd like to get us started. Commissioner Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gentlemen brought up a good point, and I asked the applicant's representative the same thing about 24-hour operation, so I think I'd like to talk to staff about that. Gentlemen brought up a good point. I mean, almost everything we've looked at opens at 7:00 in the morning and closes 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night. This one's special because it's 24 hours. What makes it special to where we should give it a look, see, and say, okay, 24 hours?
Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner, for the record. So, all the recent mini-storages, mini-warehouse facilities that I am aware of have been exterior, so that was one of the primary contributing factors, and it definitely does, the 24 hours is what we're looking at, so it definitely does need analysis. One thing I will say is that the Park Lane site or those uses abutting South Virginia Street, all that, those uses that abut South Virginia Street are allowed 24 hours by right. That said, this isn't one of those, but just in perspective in relation to South Virginia Street, this is in the transit corridor, but it's not adjacent to South Virginia Street. The indoor corridor, so to speak, for the units was a big contributing factor for my recommendation and for me to make the applicable findings for the 24-hour use. The screening methods that the applicant has proposed, and the fact that the mini-storage use in general is, the 24-hour operations is, in my opinion, kind of inherent to the use where people want to be able to access their belongings when they want to or when they need to. So, and Derek mentioned also that, you know, the, these are common, this is a common use that's found in residential areas, and are, with that and the interior model here, it seemed to be compatible, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wiskey.
Thank you. Can I piggyback on that, please, Kyle? The reason... Is, how did you justify the hours from what we would normally approve, 9:00 or 10:00 PM at night till 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning, for this use? When people are going to be moving product in and out, they're not parking indoors, but they're parking outdoors, and you have a three-story building which reflects the sound, and you have residential behind them, how is that not going to affect the privacy of those existing residences?
I just reiterate kind of what I just stated, that fact that, and I realize that the parking's exterior, but staff felt that the, those items with the screening methods, with the solid wall, and the fact that this is a different, kind of a unique storage facility in Reno, that it's interior, those factors is how I was able to make the findings.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Kyle, we're going three stories high, the condos or whatever you want to call those, but on the east side, the residents are two-story. If we're taking a six-foot CMU wall, what about the other 20 feet? I mean, the wall's going to suppress noise down at that level. It's not going to do anything for the second, third story of the storage facility.
So, if I'm hearing this, if I'm understanding right, I guess where I'm coming from on that end of it is that there's no activity at the second-story level on the exterior? All the activity for this site as proposed is at the ground level? So, I didn't really feel that, or I guess I didn't really see the building height as an issue in this instance, especially since the transit corridor has height limits that are much higher than what is proposed here. So, future development in the area will be able to go higher than that. No, I agree that, you know, there needs to be some transition, and I feel that a one-story transition is appropriate. The, so.
Thank you.
Mister, is additional questions? Discussion. Commissioner Gower.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just respond to the discussion, and my take on it is that you could, in a two-story or a three-story residential building, park outside of it, move furniture in and out of it, there's going to be that ground-level activity in that type of a situation also. But, once folks get inside, all of that activity is going to be interior, and there's not going to be any effect. So, I don't really see any justification for not having it be a 24-hour use, because you could have the same activity in a different use. So, that's my, I just wanted to respond to that, I didn't know how to phrase it as a question, but there you go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gower. Commissioner Marshall.
We're in discussion, so you don't even have to phrase it as a question, you can just state it outright. I unfortunately disagree with you. What we're really doing here, and it is, I mean, I don't know, we're providing storage, garage for, you know, I mean, they're very candid in saying that we have a high-density on one side of the movie theater, and we're providing storage for our customers over there on the other side, adjacent to an existing neighborhood. And we're going to have trucks, moving trucks can come up and down, we're going to have gates that are going to be open, open and closed 24 hours a day, backup, you know, and this is adjacent to existing development. I have significant issues allowing a 24-hour use, and actually, I have significant issues whether or not we should approve yet another mini-storage in this particular area, adjacent to existing multifamily and single-family residences. We're talking about 600 to 800 units, that, you know, admittedly, they're essentially being able to cut down their own storage internally, so they want to off-site it and unload it onto, impacts onto another adjacent neighborhood. I guess I just have, somehow that viscerally strikes me as problematic. But, you know, so, yes, our recent mini-storages have been exterior, and perhaps that in part explains because of the, you know, moving up and down of metal shutter doors, but it's also, as I think other commissioners have identified, is the traffic and the noise of, and lights of the actual moving up and down. People, yes, people, I think there would be more activity during the day than during the night, but I don't see why the neighborhood should have to bear the additional hours of operation where you wouldn't be finding that kind of activity in a normal residential area. And also, I disagree fairly strongly that wherever you find multifamily, you find storage units, or it's a usual linkage between multifamily and storage units, and so therefore, it's okay to put storage units because it's multifamily. I think that's, it's not been consistent with my experience in the city of Reno where we have multifamily, and so therefore, we need to have a three-story storage unit next to them to provide these folks with additional storage. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Marshall. Additional discussion? Comments?
I guess I would point out from here that I see both sides. I guess the question that comes up in going with, as Commissioner Gower was saying, the 24-hour use on this is not that the office is open 24 hours, it's that if you've got your stuff in that storage, you have the ability to access it 24 hours a day with key card, which I think does lend itself to a more residential type of approach. The struggle I have with that, as you pointed out, Commissioner Marshall, is the sheer number of units that are there or proposed, and the opportunity for perhaps a much heavier activity, not, you know, obviously speculation in terms of who's using it and when. But, I do think there is some concern, and I think I was struck when I visited the site, just looking at the proximity of the back wall of the multifamily that was basically right by the fence, and that just on the other side of that would be the loading zone with the U-Haul trailer or the rental, ride or rental van, I don't want to, you know, not call everybody out, that, you know, there is some inside stuff, but at some point, that's going to idle, that's going to start up, that's going to get loaded with a truck ramp or anything like that, and that is quite a bit of noise. I don't share your same concerns with the actual function of this in that location, but I do see some issues with just the sheer numbers of them and having the access extend beyond the times that we've looked at in the past of 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock. So, with that, I think that's, and that's where I'm looking at basically finding A. I believe that the proposed use is compatible with the existing surrounding land uses until we start looking at that as a 24-hour use. So, I think, back to your point, Commissioner Marshall, that's where, that's where I'm sort of maybe struggling with it, just, I think, again, just from the reaction of seeing exactly how close these units are. So, while the use is compatible, I'm just concerned about opening that up for activity after hours, significantly after hours that we're used to occurring right outside those units. So, those are my thoughts. Commissioner Wiskey, you look like you've got some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I ask a couple of questions of staff?
I would allow that, I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Kyle, why, why is there a special use requirement put on these storage units?
So.
And if you'd like to pass that off, you could.
I think Claudia's going to.
It looks like I should jump in. Claudia Henson, Planning Manager. So special use permits for uses in zones are placed in the code because it's a use that in most cases would be okay, but because of the nature of the zoning district, that use may or not, may not be, depend on the specific location. So the transit corridor is, the goals of the transit corridor are to have high-density, high-intensity uses that are transit-oriented. With that, when drafting this ordinance for this area, we recognize that mini-storage or storage facilities could be appropriate in certain areas to support the multifamily in the areas. So I might be conflicting with what Commissioner Marshall was saying, but staff has seen that storage facilities do actually show up in higher-density areas and smaller-sized units, near smaller-sized units. So although mini-storage doesn't directly meet the goals, the direct goals of the transit corridor being high-density, high-intensity uses, we have seen that this is a use that could support those density requirements that we have in this transit corridor. So we're saying that in some cases, it could be okay. We need to take a better look at it on a case-by-case basis in the specific area and the surrounding land uses.
So I didn't hear you say that we should be considering, or that an SUP is based upon what the surrounding uses are. In this case, it's just the transit corridor.
Well, no, they're, by requiring the special use permit, you do look at the surrounding uses.
Okay, so we have the residential adjacency because we have residential to the north and to the east.
Correct.
And so it's a consideration for us then to look at it to see if this business, which is now a 24-hour operation of deliveries, shipping and receiving, if you will, is compatible being up against residential. And although today, this building and the property is storage units, tomorrow's business, if this doesn't succeed, could be something else that we would be allowing 24-hour use of, correct?
No, the special use, the 24-hour operations is associated with the mini-storage. So they couldn't come in and put a 24-hour bar in tomorrow.
Okay.
The 24 hours is associated with the mini-storage.
Strictly, so if mini-storage isn't used there, then that 24-hour and that SUP is void?
Correct.
Okay. Kyle, the last question I have for you is, we're talking a three-story building adjacent to a two-story building and directly to the west of it. Will there be any shadows cast onto the two-story apartment building? Because I look at condition F, although it says glare, the reverse of glare is shadows. And I know in some cases, we have had conditions in the past that have discussed shadows as being part of a finding, casting a shadow, that's a problem. Does that apply in this case?
Yes, I would say as far as finding F goes, I would say that it, the, I don't, it doesn't, the finding doesn't specifically say shadows, but it does say glare. So I would say if, you know, from my, from staff's standpoint, the glare that would be cast, and I'm not trying to sidetrack your question, but the glare that would be cast from any, I believe the intent of that is glare cast from any building materials, the roofing materials, the, any windows or, you know, so on and so forth.
Okay.
I didn't really look at it in that way.
If I can jump in really quick, we actually have a shadowing standard in code. So that would be separate from the finding. The finding does discuss glare, the shadowing requirement, I believe it's, you cannot cast a shadow at 2:00 on December 21st on a residentially zoned property. I don't think that this is going to trigger that, but that is a development standard that they would have to meet.
Okay, so they would prove that during the permit process?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Wysocki. Good questions. Additional discussion items? Mr. Hawkins?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. If this does pass and go forward, there needs to be a six-foot CMU wall as condition eight. I know it's in here on page seven, but I'd like to see it as a condition.
Do you mind if I add some clarification to that? I believe, I believe it's already conditioned to under condition seven. It's the solid screening.
I'm going to jump back in here and I'm going to correct my earlier statement. Property to the east is zoned MU. I was believing all of you because you were all saying residentially zoned property to the east, and I just looked at the table and it's actually zoned MU, so the shadowing standard would not apply. It's for residentially zoned property.
That'll teach you to believe us. Commissioners, additional?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hawkins, I can support everything if we don't go 24 hours.
Mr. Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'm, I understand the discussion. I'm trying to figure out what the main concern is. Is it the, the sound generated by people coming and going in vehicles? Is it people talking? Because I'm trying to differentiate, as Claudia mentioned, you've got a mixed-use zone next to a mixed-use zone. So in theory, you're going to have the same type of activity occurring in those zones. And there's nothing restricting the people on the east side from doing anything, you know, within the law, 24 hours a day. They can move a couch, they can come in with a 20-foot rental truck and leave it idling for an hour while they move their couch upstairs at 2:00 in the morning. I, I don't, I'm having a hard time differentiating the impacts. If, and where I was going with this, if the concern is the amount of traffic and the type of vehicles coming in, then if the 24-use, 24-hour use goes forward, then maybe there's a condition that says, you know, signage must be posted, you know, restricting the idling of vehicles. And that would take care of the noise and the pollution. Just an idea.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I guess I'll, I'll respond back to the comment there, and maybe some of this goes to even what Claudia was saying, based on Commissioner Wysocki's questions, which was, I think, thinking about this in terms of the zoning that it already has, which is that mixed-use, and it's that South Virginia Transit Corridor, which allows for a lot of higher-intensity items that in fact, the reason we're, as was explained, the reason we're looking at the special use permit now is because we're entertaining something, a project that's actually of a lower intensity than what the code and the plan is recommending, which I think is a slightly different way of looking at this than perhaps I was originally. I appreciate what you're, Commissioner Gower, what you're saying with respect to additional signage that's there. But I think we're also looking at a situation where we've got a property that could be much more intensive use, that could have 24-hour operation, that could have some things happening under a different scenario that may or may not come before us. So I can appreciate the concerns about the 24-hour operation. I'll certainly listen to any motions, one way or the other, with respect to that or conditions. But I do think that in light of some of the discussion that we're having and the fact that we are looking at this as a residential-level type of moving operation, and quite frankly, I think the 24-hour use for people moving in and out through their couches and that is probably, you know, while it's going to happen, I don't think it's going to be a massively intensive situation where somebody's throwing open the door and having a kegger there while they're unloading their stuff outside. So I think that may have been a step too far, but that's kind of where I'm going with that. So I will entertain any.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wysocki? I would just like to say that I came in here tonight and I could not make three findings. And after discussion tonight, I can make two of the three findings, and I'm debating within my mind to make the third finding. The third finding that I'm having a problem with is E. And that's, that's based upon scale, intensity, density, height, a few things, few of those elements. It's very nice that the applicant's representative came outright and was forthright, as Commissioner Marshall pointed out, that, you know, the intentions here are for some other project that may or may not be built to the west, is being designed without garages, and these units are to implement as garages for a different property. That's the concept behind what the developer wants to do of this property and project that's before us. My concerns with noise and glare and lights at night are, have been dissolved in my mind because it really isn't any different than in any other residential use, townhome, condo use, single-family, where people have a right 24 hours a day to go in and out of their houses and drive through. I see that and I get that, and that's the difference between all of the other storage units in the past 24 to 36 months that we have seen, and we've seen quite a few. That's the difference in them. This one is not set up to have an echo between buildings that would carry on and disturb residences in an undue manner, in my opinion. It's taking something from a vehicle and moving it inside a vehicle, or from a vehicle inside a building, and then from inside that building, it gets stored. That's the difference between this and the other storage units. And that is how, in my mind, I have been able to make the findings. With Claudia's answers this evening regarding 24-hour use only for storage unit and not going on with any other project or any other use of this property, that takes care of my future down the road, 24-hour use issues. With the MU to the east, we have then two houses to the north that are single-family, whatever they are, I'm not sure, I could look it up real quick, but we know that's what it is because they're detached. I have, through the thought process and through my own personal education tonight, through conversation and questions, can now make the findings. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hawkins?
I would like staff to define the corridor. Do we go to the backside of the theater? Do we go to Kitsky Lane? Or do we go to the airport? Where does that boundary for the corridor go, since we've brought it up several times?
The transit corridor? Do you have a larger zoning map, Kyle?
I don't.
It probably goes roughly to Yori, somewhere in that. Yeah, it is on Yori. You can see on your zoning map, the zoning map just past the aerial photos, Yori, you can see the split on the zoning. And it's north of Apple, goes to, north of Apple and east of Yori are the boundaries.
The applicant's representative, Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner, for record, applicant's representatives provided a display, kind of outlining that. You can see the subject site outlined in blue there, into the, the boundary of the transit corridor to the east would be here at this, it's like MF 30.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gower, I, you know, I think it's funny, I think the last thing that I would think that I would be advocating for is a storage facility in a transit corridor. I think it's really counterintuitive, and I'm, I understand 100% where Commissioner Marshall's coming from. And on the same hand, the, I guess the trade-off is that if there is a demand for storage, and, and this is all hypothetical, and if, if the future Park Lane Mall is developed and this facility is not there, then the option, if someone has that object or the desire to have a storage unit, then that person could go to Forest Street or to the North Valleys, or, you know, wherever else these facilities are, Longley Lane, and have that, you know, that impact in terms of transit time, travel time, you know, emissions, all of that. But if the, indeed, the person that is using the facility is associated with this, you know, high-intensity development, and as the applicant's representative has stated, there's a desire to have them linked, then there's some advantage of having the proximity of the unit close by. If they are just storing, you know, some sort of a toy, a boat, or a, you know, a dirt bike or something like that, bicycles, you know, it would be right there. They wouldn't have to drive 10 miles and then go somewhere else. So, you know, I think in terms of the, the full picture, if these uses are combined, then it makes sense to me. If it was in isolation and it was presented that way as a storage unit in a transit corridor by itself, then I would have, you know, different concerns. But I just wanted to kind of talk through that, that thought process, because I think that was a great point that you brought up.
Commissioner Marshall?
If I could just respond a bit to that. I agree that we need to make certain that if we are trying to, trying to drive that, you know, high-density type of use that we provide that, an area or provide the necessary facilities to facilitate those, that type of high-density use within the Park Lane Mall, you know, for all the reasons why we're trying to drive development in the core and all those things. I guess, for me, the more, the most difficult finding I have is A, which is the compatibility finding. And it's not, it's not based on zoning, the fact that, you know, the multifamily is zoned multiple use. But it's on existing, you have to make the compatibility finding on existing development and existing uses. So not what theoretically could be put there, but what is actually adjacent to the facility. And so that, with the 24-hour use and the high number of units, I could foresee a real issue with the fact that you have all, then you have the activity taking place right adjacent to the multifamily. But that, to me, is, I can't make that finding with the 24-hour use being allowed. So that, I agree that there's, you know, kind of a balancing, that we need to provide that in storage, if in fact, it's needed. But on the other hand, we're placing it and they're requesting that we approve it right up against multifamily and existing single-family. And 24-hour use, to me, is incompatible, even though that it's, the storage itself is taking care of interior, all the activity of driving there, getting your stuff is going to be exterior, it's going to be.
is gonna be exterior, it's gonna be focused right on the alleyway between the multifamily and the six to 800 storage units, uh, inside. So, as, maybe with many things in life, there are differing opinions.
Commissioner Wieske?
May I re- about that? There are shift workers, and this is what I had to think about closely in the last 15 minutes. There are shift workers in this town who don't get off work until Friday nights, Saturday nights at 10 or 12 o'clock at night. They come home, they grab their motorhome, they grab their boat, and they head to Pyramid Lake at midnight. That would be no different than what this operation is. And coming and picking up your RV out of that unit, except that you're not loading it there, you are picking it up and driving it out of there and then taking it somewhere else and loading it. Or you're hooking up to your boat and driving it out of there, because it's not conducive to where you've probably got all of your belongings that are gonna be in that motorhome or boat or trailer or whatever it is. Um, and, yes, it's a short amount of time, but it's a short amount of time when it's in my driveway in southwest Reno also on Saturday night, or Sunday night, or Friday night, or whatever night it is, when I go load up and leave. I, Commissioner Gower is the one who pointed that out, and I agree, then the noisy part of this, when you're moving boxes of dishes and personal belongings and storing them for a long period of time is taking place inside the building, and that's where the blunt of that would go, and that's how I was able to decipher between the two and make that finding work for me. Which, that's one of the findings I couldn't make earlier. Commissioner Marshall?
Hey, I think we're at the point, unless there's additional discussion, I'd be looking for a motion on this item. Two mo- you want two motions for, one for each special use permit? Okay. So for those of you, or whomever wants to make the motion, I need both a motion for, uh, the special use permit for the mini warehouse, and then I need a separate motion, uh, for the special use permit for the 24-hour operations.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
Commissioner Gower, the floor is yours.
Thank you. In the case of LDC 19-0009 Park Lane Storage, for the SUP question of construction of a 91,550-square-foot mini warehouse facility, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions. And I can make all the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower. I have a motion on the mini warehouse. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Hawkins, second.
I have a motion and a second on special use permit for the mini warehouse facility. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That would be five votes in favor and one vote opposed from Commissioner Marshall. And so now I'm looking for a motion on the second special use permit, which is 24-hour operation for this facility.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to keep going with that motion.
Please do, Commissioner Gower.
Uh, in case number LDC 19-0009 Park Lane Storage, the question of the special use permit for 24-hour operations, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, uh, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions, and I propose an eighth condition that, um, requires the placement of signage restricting the idling of vehicles past, uh, 9:00 PM until 7:00 AM. I can make all the, uh, findings.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower. Just checking with staff, Kyle, are you okay with that proposed, get, writing the language for that proposed additional?
Yes, I, I have signage restricting the idling of vehicles between the hour, I, I need clarification on the hours one more time.
Proposing 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
Mr. Chairman, can I chime in? How about if we make it a little simpler and use Washoe County's Air Quality Management District's ordinance that's already in place? Can we?
I was thinking about that. I believe it's commercial vehicles, and I don't think they can idle more than 15 minutes or 10 minutes. I don't, I don't think it's a good.
Charlene's got a new deal, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure it's a good fit for this.
Okay.
Situation. It's more geared toward commercial vehicles.
I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay.
Yep, good thought.
That's it, I have the, I think I have the language.
Okay. Thank you. So I have a, a motion on the 24-hour operation with the added, uh, condition. Looking for a second on that.
Commissioner Wieske, I'll second it.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second on special use permit for 24-hour operations. Any additional conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
That's four votes, uh, four, and two votes in opposition from Commissioner Marshall and Commissioner Hawkins. I believe that motion passes as well. So both of those, uh, motions have passed, so, uh, good luck with your project. All right. Moving on to item seven, Truckee Meadows Regional Lea- Regional Planning Liaison Report.
We have a retreat with the RGB on the 29th at 3:00. Goes from 3 till 7. The, uh, place of the retreat has not been established yet, but that will take place on 29 November.
Can I augment that report? Since I got to go for the first time to, uh, a regional planning commission meeting, thanks to Chair, or to former Chair Gower, his absence, I just wanted to report that I immediately made a pest of myself, uh, which Commissioner Wieske can attest to, and I had a great time. So thank you very much.
Please make sure that's in the minutes, Michelle. Thank you. Okay. Item number eight, staff announcements.
Claudia Anson, Planning Manager. Uh, previous council action, um, Nevada industrial, um, zone change from MU SBT C to IC was approved by city council, um, upholding your recommendation. And Coyote Crossing was also approved. That had been continued earlier, um, for more information, and that one was approved. That's the one up in Panther Valley area. Um, as far as Title 18 update, we will be having, as you all know, I believe, we'll be having a, um, joint meeting with city council at the end of January. We're looking at January 29th. That's the tentative date right now, um, and that will be with Clarion here, um, to be go- to go over their, um, their memo that's outlining the direction on the code update. So, um, we will send out confirmation on that date, but we're looking at January 29th at this time. That's all I have.
Thank you, Claudia. Uh, item number nine, Commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items. Commissioner Hawkins?
Still working on abandonment and annexation.
That would be part of the Title 18 update.
Okay.
Okay, item 10, public comment. I'm sorry, Commissioner Marshall.
Sorry. Should be more affirmative?
No.
Um, is it appropriate to ask for an agenda item on, do we have enough storage units in our city to last for a while, or do we care?
I, I guess it's okay to ask.
I would just want clarification. Did you want us to do a market analysis? Because that is not our area of expertise.
Well, I agree with that. No, uh, really the question is more, uh, a frustration that they are some of the, I think, least interesting buildings we have in the area and, uh, provide the least amount of probably, uh, employment for, you know, type of use. And, um, I think, um, we should declutter as a general policy. Maybe we can adopt that as the planning commission to decluttering policy. So maybe that should be.
I could make that a personal goal, probably.
Maybe that should be the agenda item, declutter.
You may wanna, um, it may be something on the Title 18 update, if you could bring that up with Clarion, to consider that, because we'll be revisiting the land use table and where they are allowed. Um, so that may be a way to approach it through the Title 18 update.
Okay, item 10, public comment. This item is for either public comment and any action item, or for any general public comment. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forms on this?
No, I do not.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make a comment to this item? I'm seeing our one attendee shaking his head no, so I will close public comment and bring it back for item 11 adjournment.
Commissioner Wieske, still move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I.